Hey, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council. I'd like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&T, U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivor Nelson for the real call.
Councilwoman Latham, Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Avery.
Here.
Councilwoman Bass.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Monatra here. And Councilwoman Robinson is absent today. We have a quorum present and the meeting's open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Let us pray.
Father God, we come before you today. We come humbly, Lord God, but we come boldly before your throne, Lord God, and we just ask your blessings today as we do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We thank you for wisdom. We thank you for your knowledge, Lord God. We thank you for the things that you've already done, the things that you are doing, and the things that you are going to do. We ask that you would continue to guide our mayor, continue to guide our council, and those who work daily with our city. Continue to bless those who live in our city, Lord God, that the quality of life will be good for all, Lord God. And we continue, Lord God, to give you praise, to give you honor and glory. We thank you for your faith, God, to call those things that be not as though they were. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session.
I think we're good now. All right. You know, we having our microphone problems, but now it's back. All right. Item five on the agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on August 19th.
So move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of August 15th through the 21st. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right. We're at now item seven. It's reserved for proclamations and commendations. Don't think we have any proclamations today. It's also a time to recognize special guests, and we're very honored today to have Courtney Washington with us today, just to kind of set the table for Courtney as she approaches the podium up here with her mom and dad. Courtney competes, as you'll find out here in the program. There's eight females in America that represent the United States of America, and Courtney is one of those eight ladies that is representing our country, and she'll be going to Sweden in September to compete. This is not her first time to do this. This is, I can't keep up how many years, second time, okay. So, we're very proud of Courtney. Courtney's also a physical therapist at Northeast Orthopedic, but is just an outstanding young lady, and we're just proud to have you and your mom and dad here today. Tell us a little bit more about the organization that you are representing, and then tell us about Sweden, and how did we get to go with you?
Okay. So, I wrote a little speech, but I compete for Team USA for the UCR World Championship Organization. It is a small organization. We're actually going to get introduced into the Olympics this year in the pentathlon, so that will be something new. So, you'll get to see a little bit of that on a larger scale. So, we're still trying to get the attention that the sport deserves because it's definitely, it's what I like to say, it's like Marathon meets like Ninja Warrior, so it's kind of like a good combination, and everybody loves Ninja Warrior, so.
Yeah.
But, I wrote a little something, so if y'all just give me just a second.
Sure.
I hate publicly speaking, by the way.
Have fun, though.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I want to begin by sincerely thanking you for all your encouragement and support you've given me throughout this journey. I'm honored to announce that this September, I will be traveling to Gothenburg, Sweden to compete in the OCR World Championship. I have been selected as one of only eight women to represent Team USA. It is truly a privilege to wear those colors on this world stage. I will be competing in three separate events, the short course, the standard course, and a team event. Last year, as he was saying, I competed in Costa Rica. It didn't have the best outcome, but I placed 16th in the short course, 18th in the standard, and fourth overall in my team event. I also had the opportunity to race in Mammoth Lakes at another world championship. I was eighth in the 3K, seventh in the 15K, and fourth in the 100 meter. Each of these races have challenged me in new ways and have helped me prepare me for the opportunity that lies ahead in Sweden. Competing at this level is both exciting and demanding, and it also comes with significant expenses in training, travel, and competition. To help make this journey possible, I am accepting donations through all the apps. My handle is @courtwash13. We are also selling these cute little ducks, everybody loves a duck, for a dollar. It's just a fun way to kind of get the community involved. That way, when you see the duck, it kind of gives like, hey, I know somebody competing on this world stage. Every contribution, whether through donation, fundraising, or words of encouragement makes a real difference, and it means so much to me. As you know, the City of Gadsden has supported me through all my journey. There's a couple other people, Absolute Fitness, Northeast Orthopedics, The Rail, The Alley, Team One Toyota in Gadsden, Never Surrender, CNL Lawn, Outdoor Legacy Wealth Management, and the UPS Store, as well as Kent Haney and Nancy Elser. Y'all's belief in me and support give me this opportunity to compete at the highest level, and I'm truly grateful. Representing Team USA has been a dream come true, and I promise to give everything I have in Sweden. I am proud to carry with me not only my own determination, but also the strength, support, and generosity of everyone who has been a part of this journey. Thank you again for believing me. Together, let's go show the world what Team USA can do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney. I'm sorry. Oh. No, I was just going to tell you, I trained Courtney at absolutely. Yeah. But I was going to ask her, Councilwoman Wilson, what is your budget and how much have you raised so far?
So, the budget is $4,000, and I'm at like $3,500.
Yeah.
Pretty close.
Okay.
Not too far away.
So, what do you do if you raise more than that?
So, that's just to cover like my travel, my uniforms, and it hasn't like really helped me on just like the expensive like food, so it'll kind of go towards that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Of course.
I'm going to go out on a limb. I don't, I'm not familiar with the acronym OCR. I'm assuming is that obstacle course?
Racing.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Nailed it.
You did. That's better than most people do, so.
Yeah, really.
You're doing great.
Yeah. That's awesome. Congratulations. I mean, that's a huge honor, and I know it takes a lot of work to get to that level, so congratulations regardless.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
That is.
Okay.
Courtney, thank you for coming today, and so September 6th, is that when you go?
When I leave, and then the competition actually starts September 11th.
Okay.
So, we'll go 11th through the 15th.
Is there any way, is it televised, or did we get to watch it somehow?
Yes, so it's live streamed on Facebook, OCR World Championship. They'll livestream.
Okay.
So, the 2025.
Awesome. That's going to be great. Well, we wish you all the luck in the world. We're proud of you, and as Councilwoman Wilson said, the training is immense, so I cannot imagine what you've been doing for the last few months to get prepared for this, but we sure are proud of you and proud of your mom and dad. I know they support you and super proud of you, so it's just a thank you for representing our city, state, and country. That's a pretty big deal.
Thank you.
That's one thing that you're just amazed at is the dedication and all that it takes because, you know, when you have a little girl, you think, always think of them as being your little girl.
That's right. I have one of them.
And I meet people, and they say, you know, aren't you Courtney's daddy? And I say, yeah. I said, oh, man, she's the beast. Because her days are about the same. She gets up at 4:30 and is out running by 5 every morning.
Yeah.
And then in the afternoon, you'll see her going through the country club heels during lunch, and then she goes to Absolute and works out. And two or three nights a week, she'll be out rock climbing, working on her strength and all.
Gosh.
Sounds like Captain Allred.
That's a lot of dedication.
I waited for, you told me you were going to run with me this morning.
Well, I got a knee injury, but I'll get with you.
Those are very convenient.
I'll send heat.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank y'all. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Best of luck. Thank y'all for coming today.
Thank you.
All right. That is a big deal. We're certainly proud of Courtney. All right. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to recess the council meeting in order to conduct the work session.
So move. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for the recess, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to recess the council meeting.
All right. Well, that's the end of the work folder, so at this point, the Chair will entertain a motion to reconvene the council meeting.
So move. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to reconvene the council meeting, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the reconvening.
All right. We are at Agenda Item 10. It's unfinished business. We have none today. We'll move to Item 11. It's a resolution appointing member to zoning board of adjustment. This appoints Justin Nelson to replace David Freeman for a term expiring May 18th, 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing acceptance of Alabama recycling fund grant. This is for acceptance of a grant through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, and the amount is $52,782. The funds will be used to purchase a pickup truck and mesh tarp. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
You know, I don't want to just brush right over that. Y'all, that's $52,000 that we just got from the State of Alabama for our Public Works Department for, to buy a pickup truck and the mesh tarp when they're hauling stuff to keep stuff in there. So, another great work by our folks in administration, Tina and Ruth, Mayor Ford, John Moore, folks that are in there working to get these grants. Thank you very much. All right. Item 13 is new business. I believe we have one item this morning.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This comes from the Legal Department. This is a resolution authorizing a special use permit for T-Mobile at the 1124 Scenic Drive Tower location. They're just modifying some of their equipment, so if there's no objections, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this today, please.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is department reports, committees, and boards. Now, we have Craig Scott, our library director, also one of his mini hats. He's on the MANA Board, which is, long time ago was called Meals on Wheels, but thanks for coming today, Craig, and you have one of your board members with you, Harrison Martin. Harrison, welcome. Glad you're here today.
MANA. MENA men are here. So, my name's Craig Scott, Director of the Library, but not representing the library today. Harrison and I are representing our MANA Board. And just a quick little background, I asked Ivor to send some statistics around to you guys, but MANA started way back in 1987 with 11 meals. This morning, we had 121 meals go out the door. The meals are prepared at Riverview Hospital, and MANA is intended for the elderly, the disabled, and also the homebound folks. They all have specific meals that need to be prepared. That's why we go to Riverview. That's why the hospital is set up to handle that versus a restaurant. We've talked to restaurants before, but they want to make all the meals the same, so we operate out of Riverview, and they give us free office space there as well. But 75% of our meals stay right here in Gadsden. 25% go out to other communities in Etowah County, and we have over 100 volunteers that take the meals out over the course of a month. Since 2018, on Wednesday morning, I take a MANA route. It takes about a half an hour out of my day, but generally every Wednesday, and if I can't do it, if I've got a meeting or something going on, then some of my library staff pitch in, so I like to get the staff involved that way. But, right now, we've got 60 clients that are free due to income, and 10 are partial pay, and then 10, another 50 are full pay. So, out of that, our annual food budget that we pay River View is $122,000. So, despite our efforts in raising money and all, we don't want anybody to go without a meal, and we're kind of at that point. Harrison's got a couple of stories that he can tell.
Like you said, my name's Harrison Martin. I work at Exchange Bank on Third Street, and I've been volunteering for MANA for a little more than five years. When I was first asked to volunteer, I was filling in for someone at the bank and didn't really know what to expect. I just thought it was like any other meal service, but I figured out that it's very different. It's far from that. I soon realized that delivering these meals is usually the highlight of the residents' day, and for some, it's the only person-to-person dialogue that they get all day. One notable delivery that I make is to Miss Claudia German, who turns 102 next March. Still living in the same house for over 60 years, still cares for herself. My route has nine stops, takes me about an hour every Friday, and I make sure that she's my last stop, so I can stop and chat for a little while. But she's told me that it's the best part of her week, and, you know, some weeks, it's the highlight of mine as well. But, as Craig said, the service we offer is not delivering meals. It's much more than that. It's a vital resource for our community, and we need some help continuing it, so I'll get it back over to Craig.
Yeah. So, why are we here? So, in the past, we've raised money. We've had fundraisers, all that, but this year, the Community Development Block Grant Program that comes through the city, we understand there's a major hit, and we will try our best to replace that. That's $13,000 also from the federal government. Their emergency food and shelter grant that we get is no longer, that's another $7,000, so we're looking at $20,000. It's a fairly small amount. We get help from churches. We ask church, MANA Sunday will be the Sunday before Thanksgiving. That'll be a big program. Riverview itself, they have a golf outing on October 3rd. You're all invited to participate with that, and all the proceeds go to MANA. But, we're a little concerned, Harrison's our treasurer, Exchange Bank, but we are concerned that we're going to have difficulties making up that $20,000. We just want to put you on notice. We're not asking for anything right now, but we may need your help in the future, and we'll do our best to make that up. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes. Don't go away, Craig.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Thank you all for what you do. Just to let everybody know, yes, community development, they got cut significantly in this year's budget. Unfortunately, it comes from the federal level. A lot of items got cut out of the federal level. For example, the mural that was being painted over here got cut in the big beautiful bill, and so we had to stop the painting and only painted a smaller size. But, you know, not to say a lot of things didn't need to be cut, but this is one of those things that I would hope they would try to restore the funding, and we have sent a letter to Congressman Rogers and our US Senators to let them know that, hey, we appreciate the cuts that they've made. However, please look at this again, next year's budget. So, I just wanted everybody to know that when the budget comes. Unfortunately, you know, this is what happens when cuts happen on a federal level, filter down to a local level.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Appreciate that. The waiting list you have, is the breakdown pretty much like your current, the people that you serve, whereas it's, you know, about half of them are, would be lower socio-economic, so they'd be free?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Those are the folks that we try to focus on, for sure, and income, we do home visits when we're considering a client, and they have to supply their income so we can make a judgment whether it's a free meal or a partial.
I think it's also important to point out that not only are you providing the meals, but you're also, and in addition to what Harrison was sharing about it's the best part of the week, there's been, I've heard stories of MANA volunteers finding maybe someone that has been laying in the floor for 24, 48 hours because nobody's checking on them, their family doesn't live here, maybe they don't even have family anymore. You're the only contact for a lot of these people that are getting the services.
Yeah, exactly right.
So, it's more than food. It's medical, it's a matter of life and death in few situations.
It's definitely a wellness check.
Yeah.
Since 2018, like I said, I've been doing my route on Wednesdays, and unfortunately, ran into one of those situations where knock on the door, MENA man's here and all, no response, and anyway, called the office back. They had the phone number, they contacted, no answer. Family was contacted, and then we had to get EMS there. The person had suffered a stroke, was on the floor, so. That's tough stuff like that, but we're asking you to help us deliver hope, you know, one meal at a time.
Well, thank you all for what you do. Appreciate it very much. All right. Any other reports, Mayor Ford, from departments or anybody? Okay. Well, we'll get to the remarks by mayor and council. Mayor Ford, we'll start with you.
Hey, okay. Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. The landfill was open last weekend and will not open this weekend due to the holiday. We continue to apply for numerous grants, and wanted the public to know that, and we're in the middle of phase two, phase three of what we call them, so we're hoping for some new grants to announce here soon. That's something that's a number-one priority of our office. The paving crew has just completed paving, I think they have a completed, Heath? They're in the process of completing in District 3 numerous projects, and then we just completed South 6th Street and the Elks Parking Lodge, which is a city parking lodge which is shared with a lot of the downtown businesses. From District 3, we're going to District 2, and so the paving crew will be in District 2 probably for two to three months, and then we'll be going to the next district after that. I believe it's District 7. Is that right?
Uh, 6.
6, then 7, and then back around to 4 and 1. So, something like that, yeah. But eventually, I saw the list that Heath gave me the other day, and I want to say it's at least 50 streets, and I think I showed Councilman Back and Councilwoman Monatra that list today.
Yeah.
And it's just exciting to see that, hey, we are paving. Are we, you know, when we post that we just paved the road, it's obvious that there's still a lot of paving to be done. A lot of people say, well, pave my road, pave my road. And then once again, as you know, we rated the streets, red, yellow, green, and we're trying to get all the reds and some of the yellows that are turning red, and we're trying to do it logistically correct. When we go into a neighborhood, when we transfer the equipment, it takes a half a day to move all that equipment from one district to another, so it doesn't make sense to hop here, hop there, hop there across the city, so we're trying to hit areas at a time. And when it rains, we're filling potholes, and we're paving little side streets as fast as we can, but I can tell you this, it's working, and we're paving roads, which is something that the public wants to see. I want to hit on something that I met about this morning with Councilman Back and Councilwoman Monatra, the Humane Society. Y'all, the Humane Society is a separate entity of the city. It's a 501(c)(3). Every city is required by state law to contract with a humane society for your animals. If you don't contract with one, then you have to start one. It's best interest of the city to support the Humane Society, which we do in the budget, but there are a lot of adoptable pets at the Humane Society that need to be adopted. If you're in need of a cat or a dog, or you want a cat or a dog, man, they got them, and there's some cute precious animals out there that need to be adopted, and I want to thank the two council people that I mentioned earlier for serving on the board. That's not a, I think, y'all think I punished you by asking you to serve on the board, but it is very rewarding. We are looking for a director, so if you're interested in the director, they will be posting that job here soon, and the board will interview. The board's comprised of eight people, I think, approximately, 10. So, they meet once a month, but y'all listen, it's a great humane society, lots of pets out there. You know, they call them fur babies, I think they are, but listen, please adopt your animal there before you go somewhere else. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I appreciate that. Councilwoman Latham? Good morning.
Thank you, President Back. I will try not to be too offended that we are last for the paving crew, but hopefully we won't lose steam and momentum by the time we get to District 1. I really don't have any comments, but I would recognize, Mr. Robertson, thank you, serves on our civil service board for being present today, and just thank you to the mayor and to the city council for the endeavors that we have embarked upon. We have a lot to look over within the next week or so to make ourselves knowledgeable of the things that we have in front of us, and let me just say thank you to MANA for the work that they do in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Another good day of government. Just want to say thanks to everybody involved with the grant funding. Always good to see grant funding come in, so everybody involved with that, thank you so very much. Also want to congratulate again Courtney, right? Is it Courtney?
Courtney Washington.
Yes, on an international trip. We know that she's going to do well, and so we'll be watching from afar. Also want to give a shout out to the MANA program. There's so many needs in our city, and this goes a long way to help a whole lot of people, so thank you to everybody involved with the MANA program. And speaking of that, food distribution is going on right now as we speak. At New Destiny, once a month, so they're distributing food. In case you know anybody that need boxes of food, a lot of times, they have meat that come along with those boxes on distribution day, so that's going on right now on Goldenrod Avenue. Just want to thank Mayor Ford, your leadership, and also the council as well for all that you do. I don't know about you guys, but I'm still as excited as I was when we first came into office. Nothing but positivity for me. I'm looking forward to. Great things to come in our city, a lot of positive things going on, especially when you ride through other areas of the city, and so much construction going on, cranes in the air. All these are things that really we should be very excited about when we ride through our city. It's easy to point out the negative things, but let's applaud all the work that's going on throughout the city. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery.
Got a question to ask, and maybe I can get an answer for either one. Did we not obtain the property at Joseph T. Robertson in Tuscaloosa Avenue, the park? Didn't we? Didn't we? Yeah. From the school board?
I'll need your answer.
How soon will we own the property? How soon will we own the property? Is it liability, is there a liability that if I send the grass crew?
Because we cut the grass even when the school board owned the property.
We'll cut the property.
Yeah, so I would just, just to get that for that, yeah, either way. I'm appreciative of the Humane Society comments, because there's a lot of complaints as it relates to District Three, as it relates to dogs and cats, and so that could be one of the reasons why. I do want to clear and make understanding that the goal is not to put down these animals, is to get them adopted, because I know, I think we was at a high percentage of putting down animals because of the lack of adoption. So I do want to put on alert that District Three is having a high rate of animals scrolling the community. The unfortunate is, is that they scroll late at night, and so I guess they sleep during the day, and then they scroll late at night, so it's very difficult to kind of catch some of these animals. And my dog has to obviously be the most friendliest dog in the world that they come and gather there at the fence, so I don't know if he's sharing food or what he's doing, but they're definitely popping up at my gate. I'll leave it at that. I don't have anything else.
All right, thank you, Council. Councilwoman Minatra.
I just wanted to make mention, next Monday is Labor Day, and it is September 1st, and the mayor and council, we will participate in a program from the Alabama Department of Veterans Affairs, and that is a program for the entire month of September, and it is to make everyone aware of suicide prevention. We have lost 139 veterans in the state of Alabama to suicide, so we wanted to bring that particular cause of suicide prevention just to the forefront. So we will have 139 flags that will be at the Patriots area at Naklula Falls, and that will be for the entire month of September, and they will have a sign indicating that we're honoring those 139 veterans for the suicide prevention cause. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. What a very important topic. Thank you. Wanted to thank Mr. and Miss Washington for being here today. They're the proud parents of Courtney Washington, who we've talked about today. Courtney had to go back to work, but we're very proud of her. I mean, I want to make sure everybody understands, and I think everybody does, but there's eight ladies, females, in America that are representing our country in Sweden at this athletic contest, and Courtney's one of them. She's one of the top eight female athletes in the United States, and she's from here. So thank y'all for raising a great daughter and for supporting her and letting her live out her dreams, and we support her as well. We're very proud of Courtney and looking for great results and just a safe trip over and back, and just, we'll be cheering her on from Gadsden, but thank y'all for being here today. Want to recognize our friends from MANA that were here, they had to go back to their jobs, but MANA is so important, y'all. It's such, it's very indicative of our community of how the volunteers, there's 100 volunteers that take meals five days a week to shut-ins and people that do not have food, or they're at an age where they can't get out, and it's just a very important part of our fabric of our, the city of Gadsden. So keep MANA in mind when you see any kind of opportunity to support MANA. They always need additional drivers, one day a week, I think it's maybe an hour a day, that they need help. So consider volunteering to deliver meals. It's more than food. It's also just a wellness check, and it's very important. About half of the recipients don't pay for the food. It's all income-based, so, and then the other half does pay in some form or fashion, so they need our help, need our prayers and support. Mayor Ford, thank you for the mention of the Humane Society. It's an honor to serve on that board. What a challenge. It's just in every city, you know, we serve on these, we go to the National League of Cities meetings, Alabama League of Municipality meetings, every city has the same challenge. It's just overrun with animals, and so spay and neuter your pets. If you don't have a, what is it, AKC-registered type professional dog that's going to be on television at the Westminster Abbey Dog Show or whatever, spay and neuter your animal, or your pet, cats and dogs. It would be very helpful if everybody would consider doing that, or would just do that. Last but not least, I wanted to recognize Councilwoman Dixie Minatra. Councilwoman Minatra was featured in the Alabama, this is a Xerox copy, but in the monthly issue of the Alabama Municipal, it's an official publication of the Alabama League of Municipalities, and Councilwoman Minatra, on page 29, was interviewed and had a story in the, from the National League of Cities in our recent visit in Washington, D.C., I think. Was that where it was, Washington, D.C.? So her picture's in here, and they asked her a bunch of questions. She gave some great answers, and so we're proud of you, Councilwoman. You were featured in a national thing, yeah. Way to go. That's pretty cool. That's, well, in seven years, that's the first time this happened. Iva, you've been here longer than seven years. Has that ever happened before? Do you remember that?
No, we haven't.
With all of our esteemed council members all these years, you're the first, so way to go. Very, very proud of Councilwoman Minatra and her participation. And now, last thing, is we do have a nuisance and abatement hearing in this room at 1:30 this afternoon. Just wanted to make that announcement, so we'll be back here at 1:30. It's been a good day of government. We appreciate y'all being here. We'll see you next week.